I would like to call to order the regular Goodyear City Council meeting, the inauguration of newly elected officials on Monday, June 10th, 2013. And as I see, the council is present. And I welcome all of you. Thank you for filling up this room. This is just great. We have a number of elected officials from other cities. So I'd like to read their names off. And if you would stand, and at the end, we're going to give you an applause. So this is in any order. So you'll have to forgive me for that. We did this at the last minute. Because we were not sure if you were coming. So I'm really pleased. So let's start out, first of all, with our Honorable Judge Simonson. And he will be in the event tonight. Then we have Jeff Fine from the White Tanks Justice Court. We have the former Mayor of Goodyear and his wife, Joey, Bill Arnold. Would you please stand? Oh, you don't want to stand? Okay.[71.14][71.14][laughter] And then I am so pleased to see our former Councilman, Dick Souza, and his wife Rita. And then I'm going to, in that same vein, we have Rob Antoniak, who was a former Councilman at the city of Goodyear. We have the Buckeye City Council. We have Craig Huestis. And of course, I should have introduced the mayor first, but I always like to kind of play with them a little bit.[106.22][106.22][laughter] So we have the Buckeye Mayor, Jackie Mack. We have the Lishfield Park Vice Mayor, Paul Faith. And Councilman Diane Landis. From Peoria, we have Ron Ames, Councilmember. Did I forget any public officials that arrived here this evening? Because we wouldn't want to leave you out. Well, once again, oh, we have someone in the back that just waved his hand?
Gary Sherwood.
I can't see that, who that is. So would someone check that out? So I can...
Gary, she said Gary Sherwood.
Two other councilmembers from Peoria here.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Go ahead.
The gentleman that spoke, how about giving us the names of those people for me? Because I can't see him from the dais.
That's fine.
John Edwards.
Thank you, John. Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Gary Sherwood?
I heard someone on the wave in the back that you see. I can't see him. So are we all finished? Go ahead, shout it out. Thank you, Glenn Dale. That was quite casual. I hope you forgive me, but I wanted to say how pleased we are that you're here. So now, we will have the Presentations of Colors, led by Bill Bishop.
Ladies and gentlemen, as a reminder, please place your cellphones to vibrate or off. At this time, please stand, remove your hat, and remain standing for the Presentation of Colors by the Goodyear Police and Fire Honor Guard. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Mayor Lord, the National Anthem, performed by the West Valley Youth Orchestra, and the invocation by Pastor Greg Brown from Skyway Church of the West Valley. Honor Guard, present, colors!
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord, we come together tonight to celebrate this inauguration. We thank you for the promise from the Scriptures that say, "By the blessing of the upright, a city is exalted." Tonight, we bring the great city of Goodyear before your throne of grace. We lift up our newly-elected mayor, George Lord, councilmembers Joe Pozillo, Wally Campbell, and Cheryl Lynn Holman. We also pray for existing members, Joanne Osborne, Sherry Loritano, and Bill Stip. Lord, we would ask that this council be filled with courage, wisdom, guidance, to lead with strength and purpose. We pray for clarity of a new emerging vision for this city of Goodyear. We pray for unity between our leaders, staff, and community, as we all work together as one towards common goals that benefit the all. We ask this now in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. I have to tell you, we're terribly proud of our bagpipes. And it's always a treat for us to have them at an event. So I'd just like to give them a round of applause. We have one presentation this evening, and so we'll go down to the speaker table. If I may invite Councilman Barber to walk in the podium. Well, your time has come. I just want you all to know that Bar- Jennifer is an example of the wonderful volunteers that we have in the city of Goodyear. People who will step up to the plate when we need them. And when the passing of Gary Gelsner took place, then we sought a replacement for him. And wow, did we get a replacement. She has a great background, and it has showed up on your time on the dais. You are an individual thinker, and I like that. You express your opinion, but you're also a team player. And you blended in quite well. And she had a great deal to learn in the short time that she was on this council. You have no idea until you've been in this position, all the information. And I'm looking at Souza back there. You remember those days. And Arnold, you remember those days. And so you know what a great responsibility is. And for her to take it on for a short period of time. So we have a little presentation for you. I have to bend down and get it. Well, we wanted to have something for you to take. And it says, "Jennifer Barber, Goodyear City Council, November 19th, 2012 to June 10th, 2013. In recognition and appreciation," and I want you to know, a great deal of appreciation "of your dedication and service on ongoing contribution and your ongoing contribution to the city of Goodyear beyond the council." So I'd like to present this to you. And we would like to give you a time to express your feelings. And then, at the end, I want council to be able to also express how they feel about you. So I'm going to leave you with the microphone, and I'm going back up the dais. But once more, a hug.
This has been such an honor, but I think tonight is a great night to remember Gary Gelsner. You know, whether he would have decided to run or to step down, I'm here because of Gary Gelsner. And he was a wonderful person. And just to the council, I can't thank you enough for having the faith in me to fill out the rest of Gary's term. It has been an incredible honor. I've enjoyed every minute of it. And just thank you so much for allowing me to have this opportunity. To our city staff, you prove every day why this is an All-America city. You really do. I came into this a huge fan after the All-America City competition, and I leave even more enthused than the day I came in. So thank you so much for all that you do. To my friends, I have some friends here from Denver tonight, and we've been through so many fun times together, and thank you so much. And to my husband and my daughter, I love you. Thank you for supporting me. I know I wouldn't be here without you. So, you know, I hope Gary is watching tonight and looking down and smiling, and just as proud as I am of all of you. Thank you.
Yes, one last duty. Would you hand me my glasses that I left on the podium?[778.12][778.12][laughter] If you ask my husband, I'm always looking at my glasses and my keys. Mayor, may I say something? Yes. So first, Vice Mayor Osborne.
Well, Jennifer, you know, I must say, not only have you been dedicated to this city, but most importantly, you've been dedicated to the citizens of Goodyear. And you've served them well. And not only in the capacity of really helping spearhead us receiving that All-America Award, but also with Arizona in action, Goodyear in action, everything that you've done up in Australia Mountain Ranch, really being, you know, an advocate for your area. And I really appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Councilman Loritano.
I don't know if thank you is enough. I've gotten to know you better since you've been here, and our city and everyone, I mean, like I said, I don't think thank you is enough for what you've done. And I don't look at this as an end. You've done so much before, what Joanne just said, everything you've done. This is just another chapter, and I am so excited. And you have my support, and whatever you do, you will be phenomenal. Because what the mayor said, in just such a short time, you picked up so much, you hit every meeting. You probably were reading late, late into the night to get caught up in what you did for the city to do that, and how much hard work you put in, the countless hours, and, you know, with everything else on your plate. So a really heartfelt thank you.
Councilman Pozillo.
We go back a ways, as you know. And again, I really appreciate you stepping up, and you were an excellent fit, excellent team. And not only this, all the efforts that you put out there in the community, your volunteer work representing your constituents fairly. And you're right, Gary is looking down. And for those of you that know Gary, he's thinking barbecue.
Councilman Campbell.
Thank you, Jennifer. We wish you the best. Thank you so much for stepping up. For those of us that were on the committee to make the recommendation, we have some wonderful candidates, but you were the best one. And we do thank you, and we do look forward to working with you in the future.
Councilman Stip.
You know, sometimes when we go through that process, we don't know exactly what we're going to get at the end of the day. And there's that, we have a great cohesive team. And not only did you fit into that, but I think you brought something entirely different to the dynamics of this. And for me personally, I gained a friend, a new friend from this whole event. And for that, I'm very, very grateful. So thank you for everything that you've done, and I look forward to working with you again in the future.
So once more, we're going to show our hands in our appreciation of you, Jennifer. Well, let's go on to the business item. And we have one business item tonight. And we will consider adopting the results of the general election held on May 21st, 2013, and order the recordation of the resolution. Maureen Scott to present. No, she's not coming back up.
She's supposed to be part of this vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have to be in for this vote. So I have another item, one more before you go.
One more.
One before you hit the road.
One last vote. Do I get to second? Yes.
Maureen.
Good evening, Mayor Lord and councilmembers. The item before you is to consider adopting the results of the 2013 general election that took place on May 21st, 2013. A primary election was held on March 12th, and the mayor was elected along with two council seats who received a majority plus one votes. Elected for mayor is Mayor Lord, and for councilmember is Councilmember Pozillo and Councilmember Campbell. The third seat didn't receive the majority plus one, so a runoff election was required. The next two candidates, who had the next highest votes, would run in the general election. These candidates were Cheryl Lynn Holman and Brandon Hampton. The general election was an all-male election, and the ballots were mailed to all registered voters on April 25th. The voters had until May 21st to return their ballots to City Hall or to Maricopa County, and that's in order to be considered for the general election. The candidate with the most votes at the general election would be elected. Cheryl Lynn Holman received 3,691 votes, and Brandon Hampton received 3,189 votes. Therefore, Cheryl Lynn Holman won the general election. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
I'll give you a moment, get back to your seat, if you'd like.
Pardon?
Are you going to stay there?
No, I'm going to stay right here.
Okay, all right, fine. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody from the audience like to speak? All right. Then will the city clerk please read the resolution by title only?
Adopt Resolution 13-1550, declaring and adopting the results of a general election held on May 21st, 2013, and ordering the recordation of such resolution.
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell, and a second from Councilman Barber. Open for council discussion. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pozillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loritano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. There being no further business to be brought before this council on this part of the program, I declare this council and meeting to be adjourned. And we will begin with swearing-in of the Goodyear City Council. All right, so let's begin. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting back over to the city clerk.
Mayor Lord and councilmembers, we will now have the swearing-in of the new council members. It has been requested by councilmembers Campbell and Holman to have family members swear them in. Since the oath at the inauguration is ceremonial, I have already given them the oath, so they are legally able to participate in the council meeting. The Honorable Judge Simonson will perform the oath of office for Mayor Lord and Councilmember Pozillo. Mr. John Campbell, Councilmember Campbell's son, will perform the oath of office for Councilmember Campbell. Mr. Drew LaSalle, Councilmember Holman's grandson, will perform the oath of office for Councilmember Holman. I will call each person by name to come to the podium and take their oath. Each one will have an opportunity to speak. Mayor Lord will be first, Councilmember Pozillo will be second, Councilmember Campbell will be third, and Cheryl Lynn Holman will be fourth. Mayor Lord, would you please come forward?
I'm going to miss you guys. What's your good side?
I don't have a good side. And both of your sides are good, so I don't know what to do.
No, I think that, just a moment.
Okay.
It's looking good. I'll stay on that side.
Stay on that side?
Yeah, I'll stay on that side.
Okay. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, repeat after me. I?
Aye.
State your name.
Georgia Lord.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of mayor.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Let's see if you can, I'm going to do it this way, because I'm sure the camera. Thank you. Thank you, Judge Simonson, for that. I really appreciate it. You know, what an honor it is for me to stand before you this evening as the mayor of Goodyear on my second term, and my second full term, so I'm excited. When I was running for reelection, people would stop and ask me, "Are you sure you want to do this again?" I realize it's a big commitment, and it does impact my private life. But with the support of my husband, Ron, I decided to run again. Thank you, Ron, and I love you very much. Of course, Ron and I have always felt the call to public service, going back to our days in the U.S. Air Force, and our time together on diplomatic duty during the Cold War. Make no mistakes, truly, all of you people out in that audience, make no mistake, public service isn't easy. And it takes a toll, but it's a great honor to be chosen by your fellow citizens to serve in the office of the mayor. Thank you to the voters. City Council and I will have a front row seat as Goodyear grows from a bedroom community into an economic force in the West Valley. I want to thank all of those who helped me with my campaign, especially Ed Youngs, my treasure, and Bobby and Ann Watts, and everybody, I mean, all over Maricopa County, that helped me to be reelected. I am really thrilled that I will be able to help guide Goodyear through a period of history that could be as significant as the time when Goodyear, tire and rubber, chose our cotton fields as a perfect place to service the war effort. Not since Goodyear was founded have we witnessed this kind of change that is coming our way, and it will happen in the next five to seven years. What can we expect during our next term? How much time do you have? But I'm going to make this quick. I'm only going to cover a few of those items. First of all, we are going to grow. Planners predict another 44,000 residents will move into Goodyear over the next seven years. We also project another 1,500 new homes we develop each year, creating our neighborhoods within our city. More jobs will be growing. We will grow from 25,000 today to 38,000 jobs by 2020. Our new public library and our state-of-the-art emergency 911 center will both be open by the end of this year. The F-35 fighter-jet training mission will land at Luke Air Force Base during our next term. And as a result, our airport is poised to host more businesses doing aerospace and defense work more than it's ever been. As an example, one defense contractor is already making big news at the airport. Prime Solutions Group, a six-year-old company, has grown from one to 10 employees with great big ideas. So big, in fact, that the Department of Defense has awarded the company with a $150,000 Small Business Innovation Research Grant to explore ways to commercialize their concepts. And this grant that they're doing, there's more money to come, depending on the success of the first session. The Loop 303 Connection to I-10 is another project that is almost complete. And we're all witness to that, aren't we? As we drive by there every day, and I'm just amazed at how quickly it seems to be going. And I know those councilpeople that were on our dais before, that was conversation, right? That was in the plans when I arrived at the city. So I know you're thrilled at seeing the action that's being taken place in that area. We had recent success bringing businesses such as Dick's Sporting Goods and Sub-Zero to our city. But with the city's newest transportation corridor, we can expect to build on this success by attracting many more companies and quality jobs to Goodyear. Healthcare and education options will continue to expand during my term in office. Cancer Treatments of America, the West Valley Hospital, and Banner Australia Medical Center are expanding right now with more beds and services for our community. In addition to their expansion, Cancer Treatment Center of America is now moving into the medical research and development. With their proven track record, we can certainly expect them to be a leader in this industry. And that's going to be right here in Goodyear. We will soon have more educational opportunities for students of all ages. Franklin Pierce University is growing its presence, adding degrees, classes every semester. And that's just the beginning. We fully expect another institution of higher learning with a campus location on the Hundred Acre University Park, adjacent to the city center site. And city manager, I will be glad when we can make that announcement. So more to come on that. Finally, no speech about the future of Goodyear would be complete without discussing the most anticipated development in recent history. Bet you can't guess. Yes, folks, during our next term in office, the new Australia Falls Regional Mall will open its doors to shoppers across the Southwest Valley. And you, Goodyear residents, can look forward to a 1.1 million square feet of shopping center excitement. And I'm excited about that excitement. There is no doubt this term in office will be a busy one. We welcome new, we will be welcoming new residents, will cut ribbons on new businesses, enjoy new neighborhoods, and soak up the new amenities. But I want you to truly know, the only thing that won't be new is the city's commitment to building a strong community that serves its residents well. So to the members of the city council, to management and staff, I thank you all for your leadership and your dedication, and I look forward to serving with you in the years ahead. And finally, to the citizens of Goodyear, thank you once again for allowing me to be your mayor. I just love my job and this city. Thank you.
Councilmember Pozillo, will you please come forward?
I don't care, this is fine. This is fine, okay. Raise your right hand, please repeat after me. Raise your right hand, please repeat after me. I...
I.
State your name.
Joe Pizzillo.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to same...
I will bear true faith and allegiance to same.
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of council member.
And discharge the duties of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God. Thank you.
First, thank you Judge. Second time around is as good as the first, all right? And I appreciate that. First, I want to start by honoring that I'm honored to serve as a Goodyear City Council member, and I do, I take that really with a badge of honor. And I want to thank all of my friends and family, because again, this wouldn't happen without them, those tirelessly that walked, those tirelessly that drew up pictures and collected signatures for me, right Carolyn? All right? Again, without you, I wouldn't be here today. So again, I thank you, my heart goes out, and I appreciate all those efforts. Second of all, I'm proud of our past accomplishments, and what I mean by that is, it's just not me, this has been a team effort. It's been a great council over the last four years. We've made many challenges. We went through a fiscal crisis that started to come in. I remember we were talking about, if I recall right, City Manager, about a $12 million structural deficit. When we first took office, that was the first vote on balancing a budget. The last vote was structural surplus that is setting aside money to take care of the ballpark when that principal payment's due in '19. So we've been fiscally responsible as we've come through this. We've got money in the bank, no structural deficit, while maintaining our core services, which I'm very, very, very proud of. We've also made efforts to try to streamline our business community, as far as the efforts, our building permits, how people get the permits, how inspections happen. Try to be a little more business-friendly out there, because I truly believe we're in a new economy, and what I mean by new economy, the only way we're gonna grow out of this is to create new dollars through efficiencies, because those days of those double-digit increases annually, I think are long gone, at least not for quite a while. So we gotta be a lot more efficient with our money and find ways to create ways to still provide that excellent service. As your council member, I will continue to build on our successes of the past, some I had mentioned, the mayor covered a lot of them, which I'm in agreement with. Our exceptional quality of life, again, make sure our neighborhoods we're proud of, crime, the blight, make sure that's taken care of, provide quality services and key in a financially responsible manner. And again, promote jobs, economic growth, with a business-friendly environment. And again, I thank you all, and again, this is a great city, I love this city, and I do this because I love this city. Thank you.
Council Member Campbell, will you please come forward?
I, state your name.
Under Wally Campbell.
Do swear that I will support...
Do swear that I will support...
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies whatever...
And defend them against all enemies whatever.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, I'm short. And I have to have my glasses. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank the voters of Goodyear for the great honor and responsibility of electing me to serve as a member of your city council for the next four years. The campaign road was filled with many friends and supporters helping me along the way. I especially want to acknowledge and thank the brothers and sisters of fire and police, Debbie Jefferson, Griselle and Gilbert Apaka Daca, Ann and John Cuck, Charlotte Kraus, Nancy Der Manuel, Chuck Walton, and all of the North Subdivision, and all of the volunteers who dedicated countless of hours making phone calls, knocking on doors, placing yard signs, gathering signatures on nomination petitions, distributing literature, and urging friends and family members to vote for me. I so enjoyed the extraordinary encouragement and enthusiasm that was evident every day of my campaign from all of my neighbors and friends. While walking in our neighborhoods and talking to our voters, I have heard your desires about getting the mall built and getting it built now. I've heard your desires about a city gathering place for a multi-gen building where our kids, seniors, and everyone could go, for a safe place to meet, go, and play. For us to continue to build quality neighborhoods and support economic development as we grow our city in a responsible manner. I promise to be a good steward of our city resources, and I pledge to work with our mayor and our council and our citizens to do my very best to secure a bright future for this city. I would like to express my thanks to City Clerk Maureen Scott and her staff for this ceremony, to the West Valley Youth Orchestra, of which I'm a very strong supporter, Pipe Major Michael Leon, who certainly made all of the Campbells present so very welcome with the pipe music, to the Goodyear Fire and Police Honor Guards for posting the colors, to Pastor Greg Brown for the wonderful invocation, it fed my soul Pastor, as it always does when you speak, my friend Patrick McDermott for singing for us tonight, and a very special thanks to Team Wally. Will you stand, please? The Team Wally is the Goodyear Youth Commission, ladies and gentlemen, and these are going to be your future council members and possibly our mayor. They so willingly served tonight to pass out the programs, and we're so proud of them because they are an example of the leadership that we expect out of these young people, and I just wanted you all to know who they were. Last but not least, I want to thank my family, it's really hysterical, John, John, and John, John Senior, John the Second, John the Third, my daughter Suzanne, who flew in last night from Sumner, Washington, and I didn't know she was coming till she came out of her brother's bedroom and scared me to death, to my little granddaughter Brianna, and our very close, dear friends Toni and Becky Gibson for sharing this wonderful evening with me. Thank you to my city council colleagues, our city manager, our city staff, and I look forward to working together with all of you for the next four years, and thank you all for coming.
Council Member Homan, will you please come forward?
Repeat after me. I...
I.
State your name.
Sherilyn Homan.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear the true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of council member.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties of council member.
According to my best ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you for being patient with me. I just want you to know, I get things done, it's just maybe not as quickly as some other people. You know, when you listen tonight to what the council members who were sworn in have stated about the state of our city and the wonderful opportunities that we are going to witness going forward, I cannot thank the voters of Goodyear enough to give me the privilege and the honor of participating in this process. Others have said it, and it's true, but I have to say it too, I love our community. I chose to stay here, I have worked here for many years, and the reason I am here, and the reason I have taken this step, is because the people here are amazing, and I would like to continue to make a change so that it will be better, and it will be as grand as we hope for. Again, thank you to the citizens of Goodyear, you're amazing people, together we can make an amazing city. Thank you for this honor.
Now I would like to call the new council to order. Take your time, we're not in a hurry here. Could I please have the city clerk do a roll call vote, please?
Council Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Council Member Loretano?
Aye.
Council Member Campbell?
Aye.
Council Member Stip?
Aye.
Council Member Homan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Osborn?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
All are present.
So it looks like we're all in proper order, is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
All right. I'm looking to the city clerk, I want to get her official, we're in order, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item, and we do have cards this evening, in fact, we have five of them. And I think this is a great opportunity for the people that are at our council meeting tonight to see how government runs, and how open we are to people coming in, whether it's a praise, or a suggestion, or a negative. So I'm going to start this evening, and for the people that are here, the council is able to respond to criticism, they can request the staff to investigate and report on the matter, and they can request that the matter be scheduled for a future agenda. Each speaker has three minutes. The yellow light and buzzer will let you know you have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, identify yourself clearly by stating for the record your name and address. There was one person who's turned in two cards. You have to decide which subject matter you want to speak on, you will be allowed to speak on one of them. All right, let's go on with the first one, to Diane Henman.
Hello? Can you hear me?
No.
Oh, it's not on? Somebody help me. Sorry Diane, we didn't mean that to happen.
Okay? Better? Okay. My name is Diane Hanneman, and what else am I supposed to tell you?
Your address.
12760 South 179th Drive in Goodyear. To Goodyear City Council, in whom I make concern at the city of Goodyear, we are writing regarding the Acorn Streetlights in the Australia community. One, we would like the city of Goodyear to require the Australia Joint Committee, the EJC, to cease the maintenance work it is conducting on the Acorn Streetlights on Australia Parkway between Elliott and West Star Drive because of safety risks. Two, we would like the city of Goodyear to contractually agree to accept ownership of the Acorn Streetlights in the Australia community. Regarding number one, safety, currently on both sides of the Australia Parkway, the EJC is removing sections of streetlights and closing the sidewalk where the lights have been removed. Because the sidewalks are closed on both sides of the same section of street for substantial stretches, it requires pedestrians to walk in the roadway at night in unlit roadway. This is not safe. Number two, ownership. The lights provide benefit to city streets and sidewalks. As taxpayers of Goodyear, we would like the city to take responsibility for this required facility, which is for the public good, as it does for other streetlights for public roadways throughout the city. The history of these lights seems to lack definitive documentation. Presumably, the original developer installed the lights in the 1980s when Goodyear was mostly farms and one man's dream of something different. Perhaps as Goodyear grew, someone should have questioned how this facility should have been handled going forward. Apparently, there was some discussion because the city currently pays the power costs for these lights, although even this practice has no formal documentation. This would seem to be an admission that the city deems itself to be the entity that is benefited by the streetlights. The city regularly features photos of Australia in promotional materials. Regardless of what the history is, the city must consider how it should handle this matter fairly going forward. We would like to be treated like other taxpaying residents by having the city take responsibility for lighting our public roadways. I have an additional document with supporting information on both those topics, the safety and the ownership, of information that we know to be true, and this letter, which we drafted on Thursday and circulated to a few residents on Friday, we have signatures from some residents, and if the council would like more, we would be certainly happy to go out and get more signatures.
Could you please give that to the city clerk for me?
Yes.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Henman.
Thank you.
The next one is Margarita Sharp, and again, it's on the streetlights.
My name is Margareta R. Sharp. I live at 13388 South 186th Avenue in Australia Ranch. I believe that without documentation, there's chaos, and there is apparently a lack of documentation everywhere regarding this subject. I would ask that the city council look into this documentation. We've looked into some of it and found it lacking, so I would encourage you to do the same. I heard at one time that our CFDs paid for streetlights, and yet we are undergoing maintenance on those streetlights, and the HOA is paying for it. So are we paying double the cost? Are we, as taxpayers, paying the CFDs and then, as an HOA, being requested to pay monies for the maintenance of these streetlights? So these are some of the questions that I've heard that have come up. I've heard that the developer puts in the lights and then turns them over to the city, and I don't know that that has ever happened. There isn't any documentation, and then somebody once told me, "Well, the developer never did that." So I've heard a lot of things, I know that there is not really good... I know that there is not really good documentation. I, as a taxpayer, of course, never want to be double-billed for anything, and so I'm encouraging the council, the city council, to look into this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Nancy McPhillan, and could you let me know which subject matter, Ms. McPhillan, you're going to do? Is it on the, I said, the basins, the basins or the poles?
Well, I'm a little concerned because city clerk told me it would be okay to speak on both this evening, so I'd like some clarification.
No, I went back and I told you that I talked to the attorney and said that you would have to speak on both items under the three minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You must have misunderstood, sorry.
I can rattle.
All right.
Nancy McPhillan, I'm a resident of Australia Mountain Ranch. We've met with Councilwoman Campbell, we've met with Councilwoman Pazillo, we've met with Larry Lang, and we have discussed this streetlight situation to exhaustion. I'm willing to forget what has happened in the past, I'm not willing to forget what happened in 2010 when the city went into agreement with APS, taking the lights back and the ownership. At that point in time, the agreement stipulates there were supposed to be two appendix. They were not inclusive. I put in Freedom of Information request. At that point in time, Susan Rogers must have caught the glitch. Sent a letter to APS, wanted verification of this. Of course, yes, you have verification of it now, but the bottom line is, we have four Acorn Streetlights on San Gabriel that are the city's responsibility, and they were APS' responsibility. Therefore, the Australia Light Poles on Australia Parkway are also the city's responsibility and should have been considered and inclusive of that agreement in 2010. I think there was a huge omission. I think you need to go back and review it, and I think you need to do what's right for the residents in Australia. We are not going to be double-dipped. It's not fair. Second issue. October 22nd, I came to this council. I talked about retention basins in our community. Brian, you told me there would be a resolution or a letter sent to me with follow-up. Here we are in June, there is no resolution. According to the city of Goodyear, Newland will be responsible for fixing these retention basins. They have not been fixed. We need it done immediately. Our public safety is in jeopardy. Many of you took an oath tonight, I'm going to hold you accountable.
Thank you, Ms. McPhillan. Next one is Bill Zennick, and I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Oh, thank you.
I live in Australia. I have to put my glasses on.
I'm comfortable when you do that because we all are, too.
I appreciate that. City council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Several residents are here tonight to discuss the Acorn Light Poles on Australia Parkway. I'm trying to understand the logic of the ownership. The light poles are there for safety reasons on city streets. The lights are on city property. The landscaping and irrigation of that same property is a responsibility of the city. They maintain that. The electric bills for those Acorn lights are paid for by the city. Yet, the maintenance and responsibility has defaulted to the Australia residents to the tuna $200,000. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that anyone would think that's quite right. The city says they didn't accept responsibility for those Acorn lights. Yet, there are four, as Ms. McPhillan mentioned, that the city did accept responsibility for. No one has any documentation, but again, why must the Australia residents be responsible, and why must the Australia residents only have to pay for these refurbishing of these particular lights? Again, most of the Australia residents have discussed with Councilman Pazillo and also Councilwoman Campbell about this issue. This has been discussed about six months ago, and yet nothing has happened. Why has the city, or at least it appears to me that the city has turned a blind eye to the residents of Australia? If this was a new community, I believe that the lights would be installed and be the responsibility of the city. This just doesn't seem to flow real well here. I'd like somebody to champion this from the council and look into this matter. It seems like we have a difference between the residents, we have a difference between the management company of Australia, and also the developer, and now the city. Can't we all get together here and decide on something and come to some reasonable expectation and responsibility and payment of this? This is going to continue on forever. I mean, 10 years from now, we'll probably be saying the same thing again, and it just doesn't seem like it's in the best interests of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no consent items tonight, so we're going to go.
We have one more speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss that?
The one that we have received online.
Oh, all right.
He may not be here, and I want to call his name out.
All right, would you please call his name out?
Patrick Simon.
So we're going to assume that maybe he'll be at the next council meeting.
Yes.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Thank you very much. So there are no consent items tonight, so let's go on to the business. And we have one item on the business tonight, and that is to recommend a name for vice mayor. So I would like a motion, but with a name, if you have such a name that you would like to bring forth, and then a second. Do I hear a motion?
A mayor. I would like to, first of all, I'd like to say that it has been an honor and a pleasure being the vice mayor for the city of Goodyear for the last two years, but it's equally a pleasure to nominate Joe Pazillo for the position of vice mayor.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I heard a first, a motion by Vice Mayor Osborne and a second by Councilwoman Stip. All right. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Oh, Councilwoman Pazillo?
Again, I would like to thank Vice Mayor Osborne for the past two years. I thought she's done the job abundantly, and I want to thank her for that.
All right, Councilwoman Stip.
When I came onto council, the vice mayor was made vice mayor at the time, and I do also want to echo Councilman Pazillo's comments, but in a, from a different way, and I appreciate your leadership and guidance to the new guy, and I hope that, I'd like to think I'm just a tiny bit smarter because of those conversations and leadership, so I appreciate that.
Any others? Well, thank you very much for your comments. So let's vote on it. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. And now is the time for council. Would you please move into your new seats?
I don't have much for change here, do we? We're supposed to. So I'm not on the right of the Lord anymore?
No. Yes, but I've heard you could be on the left or the right of the Lord, it works. Right, Pastor?
I get more trouble on the left.
Well, great. Now, I would like to invite Patrick McDermott up to sing the battle hymn of the republic.
Mine eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord. He is trampling out the vintage where the grapes of wrath are stored. He hath loosed the faithful lightning of his terrible swift sword. His truth is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. I have seen him in the watchfires of a hundred circling camps. They have bundled him, builded him an altar in the evening dews and dams. I can read his righteous sentence by the dim and flaring lamps. His day is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. I have read a fiery gospel written burnish rose. As ye deal with my contempt, nor so with you my grace shall deal. Let the hero born of woman crush the serpent with his heel, since God is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on.
Does the council have any comments or accommodations or current events you'd like to share? Councilwoman Stip?
Well, just, this whole discussion about the streetlight issue?
Yes.
I'm not going to say that it's new to me, but the depth of it perhaps is new. Is this something that we can kind of get an answer to some of the questions on at a much later date?
Yeah, I think we can't discuss it.
No, I'm just asking for future.
But you can request to make sure that the staff recognizes this and gets back to each individual that came before us this evening, and also to inform us and also.
Correct. That's where I was headed with that.
Let us know what's going on. Okay?
That's what I was asking for, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Any others? Does the manager have anything to report?
No mayor and council.
All right. And no staff summary and no inquiries except what, Bill? Well, before I adjourn this and tell you about the future meeting, I just want to thank a number of people. First of all, the conductor, Claire Gordon, and the West Valley Youth Orchestra. Let's give them a round of applause. It is amazing to me, we have had them several times, and each time they improve. You must be a fantastic instructor because I've seen you other places, and I am just so pleased at the advancement of these young people, and we can't thank you enough for taking the time out to be here this evening. And then I would like to also thank, Patrick, stand up. We were at an event one night, and of course, Patrick sings around the valley at different venues, and I said to him, you know, I would really like you to come to my ceremony and sing, and that was very presumptuous of me because he's a professional and his time is precious. So I just thank you so much. I get chills when I hear that song, and it means so much to me. So thank you, thank you. And Pastor Greg, please stand. Pastor, I know that you have a group at your church who has been praying for this council throughout the year, and I'm fully aware of that, and I want to thank you for caring about the council and our city. And not only that, you contribute so much to Goodyear. You are, your church is involved in every type of fundraising, caring for people, so it's just a good opportunity for me to tell you that you are an upstanding citizen, and your church and your members really perform in helping our community. So thank you very much. And I also don't want a short change, of course, our police and fire honor guards, and thank you for thanking them in your speech. Again, we are always so proud of them, and it's, we're very lucky in Goodyear. So to finish this up, there is no further business, and I'm going to look to the city clerk to make sure there's no further business, but we do have some refreshments, some special cupcakes, and I'm not sure, punch or, no, great, great. So I hope you'll stay around and chat a little bit, and with that, I'm going to adjourn. Before I do, I do need to remind you, the next meeting, so I can't find it on the sheet. So when is the next meeting?
June 17th. We have a CFD meeting at 5 o'clock and then a work session immediately following.
Great, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. (applause)